I'd like to call the board to this November tenth, twenty twenty-five Winchester Public School Board Work Session. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Burstall?
Here.
Harrison?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Dr. Harris Gonzalez?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Burrow?
Here.
Dr. Tepper?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This brings us to the public comment portion of tonight's agenda. Madam Clerk, did anybody sign up to address the board this evening?
Yes, sir.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the board this evening? But not really. Okay, moving right along. Consent agenda this evening includes the approval of the consent agenda items, the agenda of the minutes, and the bills.
Motion to approve consent agenda items as presented.
Motion by Mr. Island?
Second.
Second by Ms. Harris. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is adopted. Our first reports tonight is the September thirtieth average daily membership presented by Ms. Buckley.
Okay, this is my annual presentation on our September thirtieth membership data. So I'll take you through this. It's aligned with GO4 Elevate Systems in regards to financial controls, and I'll explain that in just a minute, and collaborative resource management. So on this at a glance slide, there are two reports that we do yearly. The first one is the fall SRC, in which case the average daily membership of our students helps to project what our budget allocations will be. We do another report in the spring that finalizes the budget allocation for us. So this is a projection, and then we come up with our spring report, and that is the actual allocation. So both reports or both timings of the year do drive our funding for the school division. So there's just some information on this slide that just shares some information about the average daily membership, which is what drives how much money is allocated to our school division. And so that's why they are reporting is so important in terms of accuracy. So this year, I do want to just start with every year by this point, our data has already been validated through the Virginia Department of Education and is public. At this point in the year, I am presenting to you what we submitted on our student record collection for the fall, but it has not been validated at the state level. So if you were to go and try to find this, it is not public yet, but I believe it ought to be one hundred percent accurate. So I just want to be clear because it's not public. Okay, so this year we are at four thousand and seventy-eight students. This number, as you, I should have pointed out, this number, what I'm going to share with you does not include pre-K. You're going to get that on a different slide. It's not, the pre-K is not part of average daily membership numbers that we present. So right now we are slightly down in enrollment. Lots of reasons for that. We do have, we do, back in January, we were getting an influx of refugee families. That stopped in January of last year, so that while that was trending upward at that point, we haven't seen the upward trend in that particular area. There could be lots of explanations, that's just one of them. Please also keep in mind that our enrollment now is four thousand one hundred and thirty as of today. This is, this number is as of September thirtieth. Everything I share with you was a snapshot on September thirtieth. We are, I'm going to tell you what we are today as well, just so you know, the actual number as of today. So fall pre-K enrollment, you'll see one seventy-seven here, and you might wonder, you know, it's down from last year. This is a snapshot of September thirtieth. We are now at two hundred and five as of today. There is a seat allocation as of September thirtieth, so I know as we continue to increase in enrollment throughout the month of October, we had to request additional seats from the state and then wait for them to give those to us. So we are able to add more students as of this point, but for the state reporting purposes, that was the number on that date. By subgroups, I just wanted to point out a couple of things here. So we are three percent. If you looked at my presentation from last year, the first three areas stayed pretty much exactly, well, exactly the same. Hispanic is up three percent, and our white numbers went down one percent. So that's the big difference from last year until this year in regards to our subgroups. So our English learners and our newcomers, ELL being the blue line and newcomers being the red line. We are up twelve newcomers last year to this year. And while I mentioned that we don't, we have, we're not, we're stable as far as our refugees, we also are not seeing an influx, of course, from Central America, South America area, but we are seeing a bit of an increase in Central Europe. So just, that's been interesting for us, and while I don't have an explanation for that, we have seen a handful of students from that area when we have it in the past. So I don't know what the explanation is for that, but on our report, it just showed that we have some students coming from that area. So that's my only explanation for a twelve student increase in that regard. Our ELL percentages are over here on the side, and so we are up to thirty-four percent, having been at thirty-three percent last year, so a quarter percent historically. Did add this slide to this year's presentation because I think this is really, really important for the school board to know. So I took our McKenney-Vento students who are homeless, which means that they do not have stable housing, and that can look a whole bunch of different ways. It could be that they're doubled up. It could be that they're living in a motel or a car, regardless, or they've been evicted, and they're living, and they're bouncing from house to house. So we have seen an increase in our numbers, and I think that's important for the board to know. If you look back at fiscal year twenty-three, we were at one twelve as of September thirtieth. This year, we are at a hundred and fifty. So we do anticipate that what we have been told to, just the projections for homeless students in general, to increase are likely, just because of the economy right now and people not being able to find affordable housing. I will also share that I think something that is not always widely known is that when we do have students that are, fall under the McKenney-Vento Act, which is a federal act, that means that they have immediate enrollment in the local school, and we cannot delay that, not because of, you know, vaccinations or anything else that we, they have protections beyond. I mean, of course, they get all those things in a reasonable amount of time, but they are required to have immediate enrollment, which means we have to provide transportation. And sometimes what that means for us, and we are so fortunate to have a lot of federal funding that does support us in that regard, local funding is required to supplement that. And that means that sometimes we have kids living in the Frederick Lively Zone that have a right to attend Virginia Avenue, based on where they last attended school because they get a choice. And so, you know, our buses don't always, they don't go that way. So we have to then rework our transportation or figure out if there's a van we can put a child on to get a child to school. We have kids coming from as far away as Arlington right now. And so we, we have to, and that can happen overnight. We can get a, you know, a family that we needed and then transport an hour both directions. And you all know our situation with drivers over the past couple of years is always, you know, a roller coaster. So it's been very challenging just to meet that need, and we are required to get them into school as soon as possible. So within, you know, forty-eight hours to seventy-two hours. So that's been a challenge for our transportation department, just with this influx of students. Now, not all of them require transportation. If we can put them on a bus, we do. I mean, in many cases, we're able to do that, but we do have families that move out of the school division all the time that are homeless, and they get a choice as to whether they can remain in Winchester or not. And that can be several hours away, and a lot of times we'll say, okay, but do we really think it's in the best interest of the student to be on the road three hours both directions getting, you know? So we have to consider what's best, but by law, the family does get the choice in that. So I just thought it was important to point out that we continue to see an uptick in these numbers, and we anticipate they will increase as we move forward as well.
Who alerts you that there's a child miss?
So in the enrollment process, there are explicit questions where families will say, you know, if they say yes, then we have a, one of our social workers is our liaison for homeless families, and she will reach out to the family because she has to verify it. So once it's verified, and sometimes we get very complicated situations where we have to call Project Hope, which is who governs McKenney-Vento for the state of Virginia, and say, okay, we're not sure if this, if this family is or if this family isn't. And once you designate a family as homeless, they get that designation for the entire year. It never goes away. So we're required to, even if they end up with stable housing in a month, we're required to give them the same benefits throughout the. So we want to be careful and ensure that it's a situation where we are designating appropriately, but it's in our enrollment process, and so we have one liaison for the school division that does all of them because she's familiar and receives all the training and all the updates. Okay, and this is our free and reduced lunch slide, and you'll see that we are down from last year. And I think it's important to know that there have been some updates to services that our families receive or do not receive, and therefore many of our families lost some services and no longer qualify, which could be an obvious explanation. I'm not a hundred percent about that, but I will say we have less students designated for free and reduced lunch than we did at this time last year.
So I can no longer quote eighty-five percent?
Not right now. Now, remember, this is as of September thirtieth. So this number is going to fluctuate a little bit because we have to, we receive this information direct cert from the Department of Social Services. So every month, this, this is a fluid number because every month we have students come off the list and students add it to the list. So I could bring you a different number every single month for the rest of the school year, but this is what we were as of September thirtieth.
And I think it's two things. One is you have a reduction in some services from the federal government, so that's part of it. So this, I expect this number to go down across the board. So comparatively, you know, will go down, Harrisonburg will go down, and Massachussetts will go down, so that's one thing. But remember, there's two numbers, right? There's generally referenced the direct cert number. Direct cert means directly certified with social services. Those students are on, we get a monthly list from social services. They're receiving SNAP benefits, TAN benefits, et cetera. We know exactly who those students are. This number is, because we have CTP, you know, Community Eligibility Program, where every, every student receives free and reduced, our free lunch and breakfast. We don't have kids fill out forms anymore and all that stuff. This is an estimation, so there's a one point six multiplier that gets you to that number. So you take your direct cert number, which is a hard number, verified and factual, you multiply that by one point six to get that estimate.
It was one thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine?
Yeah. Because remember, free and reduced lunch, under the old definition, captures both kind of that middle ground, what we might call the Alice population or the working poor, who, they wouldn't qualify for SNAP benefits necessarily, but they did qualify for free lunch. And so because we're on CTP, we don't collect that data anymore. We just, so we have to.
I wondered how they were doing.
And that one point six is a historical multiplier that's been used for Title I for a long time. Yeah. To kind of estimate, so essentially this is an estimate of our free lunch. Not perfect, but.
But it's the same equation in everyone.
Exactly. Yeah. It gives you comparables, which is okay. The only, the only variance I would just remind folks is when you have a high immigrant population, many of them may, if they're not U.S. citizens or come from families of U.S. citizenship, they wouldn't qualify necessarily for social service benefits. So we're not, we're missing a whole group of people that are very, it's a large population in our community that might not be true in Roanoke. You know, Roanoke City and Lynchburg City don't have that same population as we did.
And, and I wonder if there's some hesitation to.
Right.
Either.
Correct.
Show your head, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Yeah. I always kind of think this is lower than it actually is for Winchester, for Harrisonburg, for Massachussetts. Then, you know, when you look at Roanoke, their estimated is already at a hundred, right at the gate. So, yeah. The other thing, if you can go back to the first slide, Jen, I think it's, go down, sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah. First correct.
This one?
Yeah. So we're meant, just reminded we're budgeted at forty-one hundred. We're, we're at forty-seventy-eight right now.
Forty-one thirty.
Yeah, and so it's a, every month, it, it tends to go up a little bit through January, and it's the average. So by March, hopefully, we're in and around forty-one hundred, so. But it's a little bit low, but we're, we're within strength, just I'm not worried, but just remind.
Any other questions for Ms. Buckley?
All right.
Well, thank you. Okay, next up, we have academic reviews. Dr. Bula?
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. See where she got it all. Right here. Okay. This is all new.
It's old online, it's just a PDF.
All right. All right, so I am here this evening to review for you academic reviews that we had done for three of our schools. And these first two slides just kind of bring you to our new strategic plan and how these academic reviews align to some of the things that we put in there as strategic goals for our division specifically around instructional strategies and making data-informed decisions for our elevating learners. Then we were talking about staff, looking at staff capacity and agency specifically around coaching and feedback, and also clarifying roles in autonomy. So our current plan that you can click on here if you want. Couple of our goals that align with this is that we want to continue to have these plans and these academic reviews with all of our schools, ones that are not only targeted by, by the state, but also just targeted for us just as getting into schools and seeing what's happening in the schools. And so doing these visits, looking at the instruction team, anybody extra that has teaching backgrounds, bringing them in. And so for this year, we were going to have four schools, five including Rhodes, that we're doing tomorrow. And then also it aligns with our division level goal for reading. And so looking at our three-year decline in reading grade level three, looking at, is there something that will come out of this academic review that kind of gives us a glimpse as to what is happening? Why is it happening? And give us more information as we go along through these processes. So each school got a week-long cycle, so we were there from Monday to Friday. And the purpose, of course, is looking at tier-one instructions. So that's where every student that is tier-one, that's everybody. And so looking things at, at the alignment with the SOLs, strengths, needs, where do we need to possibly do more coaching? Looking at PLC structures and how are those informing instruction? And then circling back around and doing spring checks. And so our methods, what we had were we tried to pair up two people at a time, various classrooms, and we tried to get into the classroom more than once, different people, different observers. And we focused on four core subjects, ELLA, math, science, and social studies. We also, Dr. Walker also did student interviews of random students just walking along the hallway and say, hey, you got a minute? Got some questions to ask you. So it wasn't even a list that was chosen, it was just a bunch of kids that she chose to just have a couple conversations with. And then looking at the difference between plans and what is actually happening in the classroom, right? So your lesson plans, are they always right in line with what you do?
Oh.
And so just, just how does that align, right? Because what we sometimes find, and it can be either, we could have a teacher that maybe struggles with writing lesson plans, but is an amazing teacher. And the other side is you can write an amazing lesson and have a little trouble. And then also looking at data, and then we would do a leader debrief, kind of get into the weeds a little bit with the administrators before sharing it out with the staff. And so when we went into observations and those paired blocks, we looked at things like the learning intentions and what are the success criteria for the lessons and activities? Is it aligned? Do they have formative assessments happening? So are they regularly assessing what students are learning? Are they getting it? Are they not getting it? The cognitive demand in academic discourse. So as you all know, the recent changes to the SOL standards are significant, and it's not just new things, it's deeper things. And so surface-level questioning and surface-level, you know, just recall is no longer part of our standards. Students really need to think to really master the standards, and that takes time. And so what we kind of look for is, are those questions that teachers asking, is the work getting down to that level? And then looking at access for our students, our students with disabilities, our English as a second language students, are they getting those scaffolding so they can access the information as well? So that's why it took at least a week. So some strengths that happened across the board, and of course, you all have access to the individual ones, but this is kind of a summary of those. Relationships and culture for the three schools. Students talked about, and we saw strong relationships and connections with teachers, counselors, specialists. Our students have a strong sense of belonging and enjoy the schools and especially specials in lunch and recess. Right. We also saw really excellent, actually, engagement strategies and structures when it came to small group instruction specifically around math and ELLA. That has been a shift, that's not a lie. And so when we look at things like our math workshop, that's taken two or three years of a lot of training. But when we were in the ELLA classrooms and our math classrooms, we were seeing it across the board. So that is a really good thing to see. Students also talked about their attendance and saying that how positive, or at least they were saying, I'm always here. So, and then our students described what they, they could easily describe what they like about school. And, you know, I do think that is important where you're asking them, and it's not, it almost doesn't even matter what they say, just that they're happy to be there, right? And they could talk about students or teachers that they could talk to, adults that they trust. And so those are, even though it's three bullets, there was a lot of information to kind of go in about the strengths that our students and we saw in our findings. When. It's touchy, sorry. When we're looking at opportunities for improvement, one of the things was teacher clarity. And what that kind of refers to is when a teacher kind of goes through, what is the reason for the lesson? For the activity? And sometimes that just gets skipped over, right? And not as a purpose, but just like time. And so, but making sure that students kind of understand why, what the learning objective is, why we're doing this, and where is it aligned? And then we saw sometimes there was a drift between what was written and what was taught, right? And so we know those happen, right, at time to time? And so is that something that always happens? Or is it something that just in that moment when we were observing, which is a little intimidating at times? It's not, we all understand that well. Cognitive rigor in discourse. So like I was referring to our SOL standards, it is a challenge when you're making a shift. Let's say I've taught for ten years on certain standards, and now I'm changing to a little bit more depth. But one thing that we did see was that the tasks and the questioning that the students were going through were just at recall levels, and they weren't really getting down to where kids may not know the answer right away. They had to think about it a little bit harder, or they had to turn and talk to a partner and kind of figure it all out. And, and sometimes that's, you know, a challenge because you do have a group of kids that are not all on the same level, right? And so that top, that goes back to that planning piece where I'm starting to plan for my individual groups of students and kind of figure out where they are. Brian may need one kind of level of questioning, and Jake may need another, and kind of being able to plan that. And then there was limited structured academic talk. And that kind of comes with our math and our, our bookworm series especially, where our students are getting in and talking about what they're learning. And it's not just answering a question, but it's talking with a, with a group of kids. It's talking, explaining their thinking. And so for a lot of the classrooms, they weren't quite there yet. Formative assessment, again, is in those moments. So this isn't like a long twenty-question fill-in A, B, C, or D. This is just real quick, like, what did we learn today? How can I make sure that everybody in this group after this conversation understands what I said and what we went through? And so checking, and again, a lot of the time it comes because of time, right? I've got to go to the next thing. I got, and sometimes that formative assessment piece, that check for understanding gets skipped over. And then you kind of, and a lot of times you talk to a teacher, like, oh, I wish I would have done that. And that's that moment, right? And so how do we make sure that we've planned it and make sure that I do hit it before I send them out the door? And then looking at access for our students with disabilities and our L students, making sure that what we are documenting in our lessons for those students, because we have a wide range, right? And so just because they are identified as an L student doesn't mean that they have all the same needs and they're at the same levels. And so making sure that when I have those students in certain groups, that I'm able to kind of scaffold the information so they're learning effectively.
Can I ask a question?
Have a question.
Yeah. So I am happy to hear that the push is for deeper cognition, but when I work with teachers, time is always the issue. And so as the SOLs were introduced, did they reduce any of the objectives to allow for the time that they need if they're going to go deeper into that content?
I would love to say yes.
Well, I know the pressure of pacing guides and the rest of that keep them from doing these wonderful things that kids need.
Yeah, so with our lesson, with our curriculum teams over the summer, there is that reality that hits you that if you want to truly master all of these standards, we need about three hundred and sixty-five days. We don't get that, right? And so we really look at what are the most important essential standards that at the end of the day we're going to feel good about that we have our students mastering? There are those other standards where it's not so much about what's on the assessment, but we do have to prioritize, to your point, because otherwise.
Are the teachers aware of the priorities and that they're getting the support from administrators that it's okay to shed a few of these so we can really go?
And those are all in the unit plans. Yeah, so it's almost like it's been done for them a little bit. It's been pruned, where here's some added standards that will fit into this, but really focus on this one. And that's kind of how it's written out that way.
If I could ask you a question? I wonder if there's any, I guess, plan or desire to move forward with, I guess, one thing that I struggle with in my career in getting people, like we do interactive interviews and stuff, is like the deeper critical thinking skills. And like, how do you teach somebody to like, think about the, what comes behind that? And it's not necessarily just the educational portion, like what they're learning, but like, how do you teach them to think critically? So is there any shift in, in what we're teaching or how we're teaching to get them those skills? Or is there even a way?
Well, there is. I mean, I, I do think the standards, oh, they do, I do like the standards better because they are deeper. But at the same time, to your point, it does take more time to get a kid to think more critically than just, who's the main character? Boom, done. Whereas why was the char, you know? And so it, it's a shift in terms of how, how do I teach that? And it's practice. And so I do feel like it's, it's a lot more, it's better embedded in terms of our units, but also like our bookworm series and our reading series where those questions are there. So because if, if I'm a teacher and I'm planning that, it's a lot. It is. Where I'm like, okay, where are they reading? I've got three different levels of kids that are reading this, and I want these still. Just because this is a lower-level reader doesn't mean that I don't go deeper in my questioning, right? But I have to ask probably three different questions. And so, and that's why like our past PD day, we talked about how do we use AI to make those questions, make those level readers a little bit simpler? And so, you know, I think a lot of teachers walked away with kind of a better understanding of like, you don't have to rewrite an entire paragraph three different times when it can be done for you in about ten seconds.
Right.
And so that was a part of our last Tuesday PD day, was using AI to do those things. But it does take time and practice.
But to your answer, critical thinking has to be taught within the discipline? Because you don't integrate it until you're about age twenty-five. It doesn't transfer over, so I can't like teach you a class on critical thinking over here, and then expect you to apply it in a lot of the other disciplines. It won't happen. So in every. So in every discipline, kids have to be being asked these questions that make them put things together, because that's what they're practicing, critical thinking.
But again, to your prior point, that takes time.
It does.
And the standardized testing is what takes time away from the teachers. So it's much more, it's much quicker to just, you know, have them memorize a few things so that you can say, okay, check that box, we did that, now we can move on to this, so I can get them ready for the ASLs or whatever.
And of course, the irony is if you teach it that way, they'll forget it.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah, so, so closing the loop, the testing is actually robbing our students of education. Good education.
That's been a consistent argument since I was taking standardized tests in elementary. It is unfortunate.
I think with Jake, it was like, okay, they went deeper, but they didn't narrow it down. So it's still wide, I always put, and this has kind of proven out when you look at international standards, like we waterski across our content, you know, and we never really go deep. But Europe and Asia are very different in their approach. I don't know why we can't interact together that way.
I had a student from Eastern Europe, an adult, whose daughter lives in American schools. And she said, "You don't, you just go like through this thing." I said, "Yeah, that's what I get." She had come up with your system.
Yeah, and, and that's where sometimes you hear where we say like we covered the standard and that just means we went over it, right? Instead of like, we've mastered the standard, we know the standard, there is a difference. And when you're waterskiing across them, that's what it is, you're just covering them. You know, I taught it that day, move on. So, and that's kind of going back to like our formative assessment where when we do have those, I can intentionally know that my students have mastered it, so I can move on. And so, and, and I do think that it takes work, it takes time, and I think we're, you know, we're getting there. But that was one of the things that we did see that, you know, it's, it's a hard adjustment for sure. Here were just some, kind of, just really a kind of breakdown for each school, for intermediate students really liking the electives, of course, and exploratories. And just looking at the need to raise that depth of questioning. And for John Kerr, really strong relationships the students talked about. And really for the next step there was looking at measurable objectives, those quick checks, real-time adjustments. For Virginia Avenue, students were, again, reporting positive relationships and then focusing on scaffolding for L students and structured talks to kind of be more rigorous when we're talking about that depth of knowledge. So after all of these findings, for each week, our team would kind of put it all together and come up with some next steps, not just for teachers, but also for administrators and then for ourselves as an instruction team. This wasn't like, hey, go figure it out. Really kind of, our team used it as an opportunity to really grow and, and focus on what we thought would be most important. So for teachers and our multi-classroom leaders, practices for teacher clarity. So again, why, we want to ask students, what did you learn today? Or why did you learn this? And they could actually answer it, right? So how do they know that they were successful in talking about those criterias for success? Mid lesson checks, you know, if you're, if you're in a 90-minute class or a 60-minute class, a mid-class check is a lot better than waiting until the end, go back all the way to the beginning. And so just be thinking, you know, have our teachers thinking about that. Again, looking at the cognitive demand and student talk, there was a lot of teachers talking, right? And so we wanted, and when I talk to the staff, just want to make that shift. We want kids to be tired when they're home, going home and not our teachers. And, and sometimes that's hard to let go, but really giving students a, a protocol that they pair share, giving them stems to use to ask each other questions. And then having our teachers doing talk moves and really having a, a goal for having those throughout a lesson instead of just talking at students. Having them as a part of the discussion. And again, having those tasks where they're deeper level, that depth of knowledge. Looking at quick checks for formative assessments, making that a routine. You know, if it's not a routine, you know, when you ask kids to get the whiteboard out, instead of it being five minutes, it could be two minutes when they do it over and over again and kind of, okay, give me your answer, give me a thumbs up. Those types of things, the more that they're done in class, the easier they are to kind of implement throughout each lesson. And then just making sure that we're scaffolding for our students with disabilities and our L students. Those are visuals, sentence frames, things that we, when we're going in the, you know, we can put it on our lesson plan, making sure that we're actually implementing that into our everyday lessons for our students. For administrators, the next steps, regular classroom walkthroughs. And so there's always an off day, right? We all have them. Is it just because, you know, you had two observers in there that were making you nervous? Or was it something that's always happening? The only way that you know that is if you're in the classroom all the time. Supporting PLCs and their leadership and also planning. Ensuring that those lesson plans are reflective where our teachers are working together to plan these out. Strengthen observation feedback and evaluation alignment. That's something that we've been talking with our administrators about, where their observations are timely, they're accurate, they're tied to the standards. And, you know, looking at improvement plans as needed, not in the sense of we're trying to move someone out, but trying to help them improve. So that's with an MCL, that's with a instruction coach, that's with a supervisor, someone that can assist them in kind of moving, moving forward and improving in their instruction. And then removing barriers for, especially for our MCLs in terms of, they are our coaches in our buildings. And how are they facilitating their PLCs or engaging in their PLC lesson planning? Looking at our MTSS, our tiered systems of support, making sure that everyone's at the table, having a voice, making sure that all of this is aligning while still supporting our students who are struggling. And also with MCLs, a lot of the coaching is around modeling, getting into classrooms, modeling a good lesson, modeling how to do formative assessments. If you've never done it, you're a first-year teacher, that's gonna be overwhelming. And so how does an MCL support that? So administrators just making sure that they have that time to dedicate to those teachers who are struggling or just want to improve. For our division team, looking at, again, paired walks with administrators, classroom visits, PLC visits. Each year, my instruction team, myself, we do quarterly instruction days with the school where we're there for a day, we do walkthroughs, we do data analysis, we look at MTSS, they're grouping. We talk about teachers that may need more support, teachers that are high flyers and what else can we have them do to support the school or the division? Looking at PD and PLC planning guides, so this is something that we started at the end of last year and it's been regular with our administrators and our MCLs, coaching on PLCs, giving them documents and resources and training so we're supporting them at the school level. Right now, and I think you all have access to it as well, we're doing audits at all of our schools with Kim Peterson, our coordinator, our ESOP coordinator, where she's going in, looking at our L students, L instruction, what does it look like? And then next steps is me and her meeting with the principal to kind of come up with what's going well, what needs to be improved and what can we look at down the road? A lot of those aren't gonna be immediate fixes, but making sure that they're on our radar. And then in the spring, we'll follow back with the schools where we'll kind of do like a one-day, almost like, here's where we, we task you with some goals and strategies, are you putting those into place? Where else do you need support? And really celebrating the bright spots that, from those findings, but also anything else that's happening. And this is just the slide with all of our observers, but a shout out to the schools because it is a lot. It is stressful, no matter if you've known me or any of the team members for a long time, having somebody come into your classroom and sit down and, and I'll be honest, we, you know, we're looking for things. And so that can be a little overwhelming and, but, you know, they, I think all of them have made shifts already, administrators have said that. And, you know, it's really what it comes down to is just how are we supporting our students? But also for my team, how are we supporting our staff? So, you know, everyone's more confident the next day and they know where to go if they, if they do need support. So that's our academic review. Yes?
How does this tie in with the strategic plan? You know, how do you quantify these actions that you're taking, you know, in accordance with the KPIs? And maybe just give an example or...
Offhand, I know we have a KPI for coaching cycles. And so one of the things that I left in task with the MCLs especially was conducting true coaching cycles. Because there is a difference between just going in a classroom and helping out for a couple days and then leaving and maybe not coming back for another month until you leave me again. Where a coaching cycle is kind of like you're, you're developing routine within, for a teacher. And so that takes time, that takes practice, that takes co-planning with them. And so, you know, I can't remember offhand what the, what the KPIs, but the coaching. I do, I do think like when, like, for these objectives in particular, when the instruction changes and we do hit those depths of knowledge, we will see it show up in our students in terms of what they are achieving, in terms of SOL tests or whatever they are. You know, there is, there can be a shift. And, and I think that will happen when there's a little bit, I wouldn't necessarily say like a, like a more focused eye, but everybody is kind of focusing on, it's not just the SOL assessments, but it's looking at our kindergarten, first grade, second grade reading. What are we looking at for data and is it aligning with the instruction that's happening? And so I do think that some of those things that may not be directly related in here, we'll still see it improving as we go along. Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Dr. Bullock? I appreciate this presentation, Jake. It's super important, I think, for the board to hear the accountability model. That's what I've seen when, when I receive these reports is, you know, we know our teachers are doing fantastic things, but to hear about you going into the classroom and actually providing support and feedback and, I don't know, I, sometimes our teachers are not always appreciated as much as I think they should be, but this presentation shows like just how much the MCLs and teachers are, are actually doing, so thank you for that.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, I mean, hard work is happening for sure and every day in every classroom. And so for, you know, after doing this, the task for my team is how do we support and just improve? Because, you know, the, there's plenty of work and, and sometimes, you know, like we were telling some of the teachers, like, you guys are working hard. Let's make our kids work a little hard, you know, and, and because I think that's the adjustment that I'm, I'm hoping with some of these next steps, I think will, will help our teachers.
Thank you very much. Are you still up?
Still up.
Okay, so we have quite a few future extra items. The first one is Dr. Bullock again with the Hanley Program Studies.
Don't need that one. Did it not go to it? There it goes. Okay, each year we, John Hanley High School brings you the Program of Studies to give you any changes or updates that we've made. And first shout out to Ms. Badman and the Hanley staff. This takes a lot of work, a lot of reflection, a lot of forward thinking too, which I'm really excited about this one in particular. And, you know, each year we've made these changes and I think for the past few years has really, we've really narrowed down and kind of given a, a good alignment to a lot of the coursework. And so you can always click on that link, that will open up our Program of Studies. It's really nice, easy to navigate for students and our families. So I'll just kind of go through some of these, I won't read every single one. But the course additions, introduction for teachers to tomorrow, or for tomorrow. And so that's starting off to where that will be an elective for our ninth grade students. And that is teachers for tomorrow. Then is also a one and two course at the IC. Foundations of Algebra II, or Algebra Part II. And that is support for our students that are not ready to take Algebra I, 180. And that provides them for a little bit more support prior to going into that. Music in Society is exciting. And that is, let's see, that was Missing for Block Two of Humanities and Arts. And so that's a UCGS course, which is Uniform Certification for General Studies. And so that will transfer to New Virginia College. And then some modifications and replacements, so if you see that arrow, it's kind of a shift. So just Debate goes to forensic speech. And that continues, Debate will continue to be an after-school activity. Electronic One is going to unmanned aircraft systems, drones, which is very exciting. And that pathway, we're, we're excited to kind of expand some of the CTE activities. And so that'll be really cool. And of course, the career demand is increasing. And the interest level for student survey is also off the charts for that.
But not for electronics? No, no interest in electronics, just curious?
No, it just, I think that just shifted over. And then Electronics Two, it will be there just for one more, just for those students that are in one. The shift here, converting German, that creates a new pathway for students to continue Spanish. And so our students overwhelmingly have been choosing to take Spanish.
So it's not gonna be German anymore?
There won't be German anymore. And that's like across the board, colleges are saying if they're, yeah, they don't have that either.
When I first rotated on the board, we were given the same presentation about the program of studies that was changing. It was in the old John Kerr building. And that was when Richmond decided not to make languages a part of the advanced diploma or something like that, do you know that, Jason? And I think now you're seeing the residual effects of this, you're losing, no, don't get me wrong, I, I teach Spanish, so I, I love that we have this impact rate for Spanish, but I think it comes at the cost of German, Latin, and now probably on the horizon is French.
I was gonna ask about Latin just because it's so, it's like universal, it translates into so many different areas. And so that wasn't a thought.
We haven't read Latin in five years.
Four years, five years.
It's just, and really...
It's not required, so the students are not assigned. Kids don't take it, it's so useful though.
But the exciting thing about this is for a number of reasons. One, this is beyond Spanish four. So what this would do, and thinking about this too, is every year our dual-language students, the number is increasing. And not only just the number, but also the level of competence that they have in Spanish is, like if you were to just take them from our ninth graders that are here now to fifth graders, and I'm also speaking about my children, but the, the levels of, of how our students are speaking Spanish and it's not just reciting things, it is conversation Spanish. This allows our students to... This allows our students to go on a couple of different pathways. One, after Spanish Four, they could go into an AP level Spanish, or they could go into this, which is Conversation and Culture, One and Two. And this would continue to be in Spanish Studies, but also looking at how, and Sarah Weinstein has already gone in and talked to like Valley Health and some other areas about translation services and conversation services. And of course, our students see that, right? And so being able to not only be fluent in Spanish, but then take a step further. And there's a couple of assessments that our students can take to actually get certified to be translators. I mean, we need them all the time. And so being able to just kind of show students like that this one pathway, it's not just an AP Spanish, but also going into different ways that you can use that is really exciting.
I assume the AP Spanish would be earning college credit? Would there be a possible way for these to also, because that's some of the stuff that I do, I shouldn't have.
I don't know, maybe.
Yeah.
Let's put it in, let's do it. Adding AP Psych, Video and Media Technology is just looking at that change. It's Television and Media Production, One and Two. And then the course deletions, a lot of these were ones that were, so with the Ls in particular, these classes here were, the emphasis really is being replaced and where our students are in English as a Second Language courses. So some of these, as you go back through, I mean, like you mentioned, going through the program of studies over time, there's courses that may still be in there that we're like, oh, we don't need that at all because it's here in this course. A lot of these CTE ones were removed in response to the VDOE update in what courses can be credit bearing. And so if you notice, some of these on here are mentorship and stuff like that would no longer be credit bearing opportunities for our students.
That's a shame.
Is a terrible thing.
Mentorship, yes.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're still waiting on some things to kind of, we'll have to do a report. It's all the dust.
Whenever success is there.
I know Skip, you've done an internship with the city. Have you been doing, you're doing your internship over at Daniel Morgan?
And Buck.
Yeah, and you had another one, so some, these internships no longer can count for credit. Which is exactly what we want our kids to be doing. We want our kids out in the community, we want them experiencing the professional world. And then another hidden thing that happened was we had enough, because we're on board before, we had a number of students in the fall semester have to scramble to be eligible to play sports in spring. She had to pass through, you then have three credits to play sports. And so this decision came overnight and affected a lot of students.
Well, I find that irresponsible, sorry.
I don't understand that, I really don't. So mentorship is different to the internship? I don't know what mentorship is, what is that exactly? That was.
The others are internships.
Yeah, yeah, the others are internships.
And it doesn't mean we're not going to do internships, but they're no longer going to be credit. Well, we still do, we want, we still want kids to do internships, but they're not going to get credit to do it.
Not only, no, do we want them, the employers want them to do internships.
Could they get paid now if it's not credit bearing? Before it was credit bearing, could they get paid?
Maybe they can pay, some of them did, yeah.
Okay. Maybe there's a concern just to, is this also something that could change based on the change in the administration in Richmond?
It could, yeah, there's a lot of discontent on this particular decision right here across the state.
Okay.
Yeah, and it happened like.
A month ago, right?
Yeah, and it wasn't even over the summer to let us adjust.
What was the, why did they say they wanted to, why did they say they did that? Was there a rationale?
I don't even think we had a rationale.
No, the only thing I can gather is in the same conversation, they're raising the cut scores for SOLs, which is really a veiled kind of alignment to a traditional Latinized college building pathway for all kids. And so minimizing, I mean, on the one hand, we're saying we value career technical education, we value internships, and on the other hand, we're going to make it even more difficult to participate in. So I don't have a good reason.
The longer you're on the board, I think you'll come to low the program of studies presentation. Or maybe low is not right, there's some good stuff in here, but it's always like, you always lose something. And, and it's one of those things where once you lose it, you're not going to get it back. That's how I feel about it. This type of change is so slow moving. Like when we lost the, the language requirement. That's not my lifetime, it's not mine.
Yeah, we're ten years older.
And then the final section, the Brian Loves or?
The low enrollment. I was surprised the state mental health on there actually.
These were removed. So yeah, and it's not just low enrollment, but also unavailable teacher licensure or that the content is already offered in other classes. And so just, it may sound different, but it's pretty much right in line for another course.
So I just have a question, just because everybody always talks about this specific thing, I think the norm point, life skills. Is that offered in another, is that like spread out amongst other classes? I mean, it's kind of been like a, I mean, again, since I was in school, talking about why aren't we teaching kids to fill out the 1040 easy? Why aren't we showing kids how to budget? Like is that?
Well, there's personal finance that students have to take in high school. And other life skills we've talked about, what were we talking about?
Time management, probably, it says life skills are.
Yeah, it, I mean, those can kind of be embedded in some like programming and stuff, but then it goes back to when do we have time to do that? But a lot of those, students either aren't taking them or there's no longer licensure that kind of fits to where you can kind of call it a class like that.
And during, in our CTE courses, you have these soft skills, we're actually, we assess students on the soft skills, interviewing skills, those type of things. So to your point earlier, it's much more meaningful for a student to learn that in their computer class or in their carpentry class than standalone class on those things. And it just had really low enrollment too, so kids can sign up for it.
Some of the writing is together.
Ms. Carver always wanted the whole vet to come back, remember?
Yeah.
Yeah, she, she really hated it, that was fine, she wasn't wrong.
Right.
Any other questions or comments for Jake? All right, The Jake Show has ended.
All right.
And I just accidentally closed out my, what do we have next?
That's Jason.
One page, so.
Okay. I think you guys have all been around for this. We, we have, we have a, a membership on the Museum Archive Board. It's a longstanding board that's connected with the WF origin and the JA origin. And we meet once a quarter and I think there's seven members on the board. But tonight, we're just asking you to reappoint these four folks to the board. And what do they do? Well, they get into the archives, they go down into the basement and make sure everything's organized. If you ever get a chance to have a room just off the marble hallway on our way out and we go down the steps, there's a beautiful little room that you can get access to. They've done a good job of preserving artifacts. In fact, the two cases on either side with the dishware and I think Doug Joyner's band uniform is in there. You know, and so it's a, it's not, it's not a big lift, but it does preserve the history of Johnny and the High School.
Do they do it again with the Douglas Museum?
No, that's a separate, that's a separate group. Yeah, yeah. These guys have been on the board already.
And so you're just reappointing them, right? And that's a future action. Future action.
Show, will all of you show up on the present agenda?
Correct, yeah.
Unless you tell us otherwise.
Unless you tell us otherwise.
Unless you tell me otherwise.
All right. Ms. Buckley, Ms. Buckley's up?
So we have six minor follow fees tonight. Is there anything anybody would like to discuss?
We had, we had a chance to look over these before the meeting, so Ms. Buckley's not going to go through all of them. Field trips did come up, I think, do you want to say anything about that?
So did you want to mention, I know you worked all this with the board?
Oh, yeah, 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 so this one, Ben sent a question on that one. This is aligning our policy with our actual practice. So recently you all got an email from Gary saying that someone was going out overnight. And then I looked at the policy and it, because Mark Timmons, who was doing that, he's like, well, it says, you know, beyond the immediate surrounding. And he was like, well, we're in the surrounding areas. I'm like, let's just eliminate that ambiguous language and say anytime it's overnight, the board should be informed. We have kids going out anywhere, I don't care if they're going out to Steven City or spending the night, you guys should know about it. So that's why we're changing this. And then of course, if it's international, you have to approve it. Now, we don't have international field trips, so that's not really a big deal, but so we're just cleaning it up.
I just have a small question, like who, who checks all the Virginia statutes? Is that the, the SBA that aligns those for you? And the only other one we were talking about had to do with these safety drills, where at the end it says you were going to present your, just wondered what you meant by present. The last one right there, each school of bleeding control will present such kits. To who, to whoever is in.
No, whoever's participating in the safety drill. The team that, so they'll just need to know where those stop the bleed kits are, which they're available in every building.
Bring it out and show everybody that.
I think, I think the point is just that everybody knows where those are located in the buildings. And that there's constant discussion around those at every drill so that it becomes a matter of muscle memory.
I wonder too if that would be part of the pre-serve, pre-service professional development. I mean, we were always informed where the defibrillator was, the epi pin.
And we do have, I mean, it's our goal to have all of our staff trained in stop the bleed. We brought three new kits last year for every building. But we've updated them all. So each school has teams that are trained in stop the bleed. I won't say we're completely up to date, but we are close to being up to date in terms of that training.
Good questions. Any other questions for Ms. Buckley? Very good. Thank you. We've got Dr. Bulow and or Dr. Joyner coming up to talk to us about the major policy changes. Don't you both go by at the same time?
Mine is deletion. So this is just deleting this policy regarding remediation and it is, yeah, just redundant. It's been, it's included in our literacy plan, our program for students with breathing deficiencies and remedial summer instruction.
So just cleaning it up?
Yep.
All right.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
Let's see.
That's the memo.
Is that the memo? Let's do, yeah, let's go, let's go. Yeah, I have EB School Crisis Emergency Management Medical Emergency Response Plan update for your consideration this evening. This is due to recent changes in Virginia law and best practices update. You recall a lot of, we talked about this in August of 2016, a lot of revisions to our plans, adoptions of current protocols, upgrades in FY 2021 and 22. And a federal grant, some of you recall, the WISE grant, where we implemented many, many things in our emergency management structures and protocols. This is an example, the good news I have for you tonight is it is a major revision, but it's an example of policy, law, and best practice catching up to most of which we have already implemented over the years. And I'll point that out to you. The additions are expanded interagency collaboration, designation of the Division Emergency Management Manager required onsite annual meetings with law enforcement or the safety audits, inclusion of public health emergency planning, couple of new areas in requirements for cardiac emergency response plans, SERC, and athletic action plans. Bleeding control, which you all just talked about, and we'll be aware of procedures. You'll notice in the recommendation I said WPS customizations. None of this is entirely new for us and we have been implementing, so we'll just customize or tweak some of the things that we're already doing. The additions here are that certain EAP requirements, division line, some drills, documenting that, the bleeding control programs, stop the bleed, the lock zone procedures, staff training and drill education. And then scheduling onsite meeting with law enforcement and safety audit committees and adding the regional EMS council development and workflows. So let me take you through each of these areas, what the policy wants and where the change is on, just very quickly. And the development of the plan existing, and I have it documented here for you for this as well, but let's see while we pull it up since I have it in here. So right here, it adds the Executive Director of Regional Emergency Medical Services to the process. We've been doing that for two years. If you recall in August, you saw the check also, the crisis plan, how that plan was developed. So again, policy catching up to what we already do. Emergency manager designation, we've been doing that for eight or nine years. Currently I'm designated for emergency management for the division. The safety audits, this currently is overseen by Mr. Smith in operations and the school principals, they work together. We're checking to see, this is requirement for there to be an onsite meeting with the superintendent designate and local law enforcement to discuss the safety audit finding. We already hold a meeting of this type and we're looking to see if we need to change our documentation in the next cycle on that. But if so, it's not a major change for us since we already have the process in place. Previous policy did not address public health planning. It says, you notice here, it says during public health emergencies. If you recall, the summer appendix A to that crisis plan that we went through is from the Northern Virginia, Northern Chennepin, our regional commission. And there was that, the piece called Hazard Definification and Risk Assessment. It's about 300 pages in the back, one section of that is pandemic planning. And we've been including that for the past three or four years. So we believe we need to actually exceed this requirement with a different policy. As Ms. Buckley was talking about, AED, stop the bleed kits, by the way, are located next to all AED kits in every building. Some have, Hanley has three or four actually, and that is part of our drills and training. We were training every staff member in civilian response and casualty care prior to the current governor's administration and training all of our staff through that. We had the goal of getting all of our staff trained. When that administration came in, they canceled the course and stop the bleed was part of that. In response, we trained all of our nurses as trainers in stop the bleed. So about 34% of all of our staff are trained in stop the bleed right now. We're responsible for outfitting all first responders in the city with those kits as a result of that federal grant we had in 2021 and 22. So we've been up here and stop the bleed implementation across the state. One thing that, a couple of things that are new in this cardiac emergency response plan, that means you'll have a dedicated, and Student Services is already working on this. If you approve this umbrella policy, Ms. Buckley will come back and be some other policies about this and the structure and the athletic plans and putting it together. It essentially means there'll be a team of folks trained for cardiac emergency in addition to our already in the management. So if you have a cardiac event, you'd have a team of trained people beyond all AEDs and that sort of thing to respond to cardiac emergency. That is new, they've already, they're already working, they have draft protocols and structures in place. The dedication, you'll hear more about that as Student Services implements that. And then the Athletic Emergency Action Plan, you know, we've had trainers in all of our events forever. We have plans in place in emergency management, but similarly to that, there are identified folks, a little bit more structured than what has been required before. So there'll be some customization for us to add that. The kits are all of our drills and. The kits are all of our drills and placement of AEDs and stop the bleed, or I told you about stop the bleed here. And then you'll hear more, you've already heard from Student Services and Ms. Buckley on the lock zone, but there'll be some enhancements in training and annual review there. So training, legal references, cross-references there if you wish to read. So that's it. It is a major upgrade, thankfully for us. We're just required to do some minor customizations to meet.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Any comments or questions?
I have a comment on wording on 2.6 of the EBB plan. I'll read the whole statement and then try to explain what I'm wondering. Says, I'm at the third highlight on that page. Each school has contingency plans for emergencies that include staff trained or certified in. Then you list cardio, CPR, AED, hybrid, and emergency first aid kit. It sounds like it is optional to be either trained or certified, though I think you need to be certified in some and trained in others. Like, I gathered that you need a certification for CPR, but training for AED?
You are required by policy to have, and it's based on the size of the staff, you're required to have a certain number in each staff trained and at that higher level for each school, Student Services monitors and implements that each year.
So it's not optional, it doesn't matter?
Correct. So you have that group at core. Now, our CPR training, which is required for licensure for all staff, includes AED and those other things, but no. The includes staff trained or certified, and that's referring to the lowest of the basic number of folks trained in each school, not all staff.
So as it's written, it stands, it makes sense.
Yes, yeah. You have to meet that minimum qualification.
Point out most critically, however, that you have a grammatical lapse in the first sentence here. Each school specifically including those that schools that have.
I wish I could take credit for that, because it's great.
So the first that, it should be each school specifically including those that.
Those schools, there's an extra that.
Yes, there is.
Did you get that? Okay, thank you.
And Stuart has, I like the.
Yeah, skipped over to that.
Yeah, my eyes is red.
Excellent.
All right, thank you, Dr. Joyner. Up next, I believe, yeah, we have Ms. Howard McDonald. Talk to us about bus purchases.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm filling in for Ed Smith, who is out of the area. So presented before you is background on, we typically have a five-year capital improvement plan that calls for replacement of 15 buses in the next five years. So before you, you have, we are requesting to replace four buses this year. This will put us a little bit ahead of the curve. As you've heard once before, we have a period of time where we purchased 20 buses with some bond proceeds, I believe, and so that's going to catch up with us here soon. And so we're trying to get ahead of the curve a little bit. As presented, some of these we're planning to fund out of our 931 fund and out of our 921 fund. As presented, these are all on state contracts. The difference, I believe, from my explaining, this is a special needs bus, so a sped bus, those are always more expensive. And these other general ed buzz would depend on the size of the bus or on the storage capabilities under the bus and such, make changes, differences in pricing.
What was the difference between the 931 fund and the 921?
The 931 fund is our capital improvement fund. So the 921 is our general operations fund. So we have some additional funds that you approved through appropriations last meeting, additional state funds from the state budget that we plan to spend a portion of those in the appropriations we appropriated as such. The 931 funds is where our capital and our carryover funds go to our 931 fund.
So these quotes say they're good for 30 days from September 11th. Is there like any likelihood that the amount would be much different?
Typically, they don't change. If they do change before the next meeting or before he orders them, then Ed will break it back and say that it did change. I think that happened last year, but typically, they don't typically, but. Because he won't order them once they are approved, and then we usually don't receive them until in the spring.
I was just curious, the king wears a diesel. I couldn't tell if the others would be.
Probably gas, we've been buying mostly gas lately.
Is it more of this special education bus?
No, it's a general.
This is the diesel, the diesel.
It should say on there.
Too early for electric buses.
There's not anywhere to.
I would assume if it doesn't say diesel, it's probably.
Yeah. Good assumption.
But we can ask Ed that question if he wants to, Mary. Yeah?
Just curious.
Yeah.
That's a quick email, I'm sure.
We have any questions to tap a word?
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, Dr. Dan, you do want to tell us about the school board meeting schedule?
So we're just getting ahead of this here for January, all of next calendar year. So we've reoriented our approval date to align with the new election cycle. So this is what we're proposing. Very similar, the one thing Brian and I talked about, Brian's idea, and I like it, is in October, we would typically have a work session, a retreat, and a business meeting. So we recommend that, I agree, just having the retreat and the business meeting. Any business we have to get done, we could do it after retreat if we needed to, but it saves a meeting for. So just, what I would recommend is you all look at your calendars, just give us some feedback offline, talk through. If there's any glaring, you know, mistakes, let us know, but we'll keep the same rhythm we have for the past couple of years.
All right, great, thank you. And then last, finally, the Hanley Trust lease.
Yeah, so as you're aware, through the generous donation of a local benefactor, 20-plus acres was purchased at the end of Jefferson Street. So if you go past Innovation Center and go to the dead end there, go in cul-de-sac, you kind of walk up there by the water tower and peek out over, there's a field, a 20-acre field. And this was purchased by an alumni and given to the Hanley Trust for the purpose of giving to us for practice fields, for athletics. And so this, so because of that, they currently, it's obviously owned by the Hanley Board of Trust now, they want to align all of our leases, right? So remember, the Hanley Board of Trust owns the ground that Hanley sits on from Valley Avenue all the way to the Banfield, and they own the ground that the Innovation Center sits on, right? And we leased that to them, or they leased it to us, I'm sorry, for a dollar. And so that's been going on for 100 years now. So this is going to take all those lease agreements, put them kind of in alignment. So what you're going to see here, our attorney's been looking through this with Dennis Laffman. And essentially, the key phrase here is down here, term one. So whenever we sign this, let's say it's December 1 of 2025, it will go for 30 years, consecutive five-year terms, and a symbolic $1 rental. And that will continue our agreement with the Hanley Trust.
Are there property taxes? I don't know anything about this.
No.
The Hanley Trust doesn't pay.
It is exempt from property tax.
Or, or else?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, also the.
So to clarify, Winchester Public Schools, and Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, but we own the property of all of our other schools. Yep, we just don't own the property of the Hanley and the old John Crow, which is now the.
Right.
And it's the new tractor land. And this new tractor land, which is going to be, I guess, subsequent to all of this.
So this is one of those unique things about Winchester, right?
I was telling Brian that, you know, in the Iron, the Catholic Church holds all the.
Yeah, there you go.
Like those hot school systems.
That's right.
There you go. It used to be that way in Mexico too, and then there was a revolution.
There was one in Iowa too.
They didn't keep them, they had to run out.
We have a good working relationship with the Hanley Board of Trust. They need every quarter. Remember, they also give us about $120,000 a year to do fun cool things that we do with our teachers and kids. You know, in some sense, this is perfunctory, but it is rare, they do own the land. We're excited to develop the land in the future for practice fields. And as you guys know, if you're athletes, right, we have one field with no lights on it. And so, which means our kids can only practice until dusk, and I think by the time we walked in, by day of six, it was already dark. So we need more space. Most modern high schools have at least two, both lighted, full-on fields, many times it's two turf fields. So our athletes don't have that access, and they need that.
Isn't Trust also own the lower field that's right at the, like below Innovation Center there, that field? It seems to me that a better site for practice field than the larger.
It's somewhat constrained, it's not very big. But we looked at that, for example, to fill that in, someone told, someone told us, I think it was Harry Engineering, we'd have a million-dollar filter just to grill that.
Does it go like this?
Yeah.
And that's the back end of the museum of the valley?
Yeah.
That way.
Yeah.
Why is the lease 30 years versus, we discussed, a longer lease period?
We, that's a great question. And so through this process and through our attorney, Joel, we tried to get a 50-year term, just to kind of say, hey, let's get this as long as possible, and it just wasn't agreeable. So it's at 30.
I mean, it's. Raises question marks.
It is an interesting thing, like, what would happen? You can't even envision a day where it's like, yeah, we're going to not lease this again. And it won't happen, I'm not worried about it.
Any questions on this? Okay, all right. That brings us to the need for closed session this evening.
Pursuant to section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, motion that the board be enclosed after November 2, discussing personnel matters, including protected candidates for employment and the assignment of financial promotion, performance, devotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific public officers, employees, or employees, specifically candidates for construction slash license positions, coaching statements, and substitute teacher, and reports that foster.
All right, motion by Mr. Bursinov, second by Ms. Harris, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're in closed session.